I hereby call this meeting of the Nevada City Planning Commission to order. We acknowledge that the Nisonnan people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nisonnan land that was never ceded and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nisonnan land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nisonnan Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition. That's pledge allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Commissioner Chisco Martinez?
Here.
Commissioner Tanai?
Here.
Commissioner Hatami?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
All right, now take public comment on any items not on the agenda. If you have comment on items on the agenda, please hold it until we get to those items. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to anything not on the agenda? No? Okay. Next, we will consider the consent calendar. Does anyone on the commission or the public have anything they'd like to pull or discuss on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
All right, someone like to make a motion?
Oh, I move we approve the consent calendars.
Have a motion?
I second that.
Second, thanks Jim. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, consent calendar passes. Go to the first item, 207 North Pine Street Think Natural sign. So the applicant would come to the front and sit here. And Amy, would you introduce the item?
My name is Lisa.
Oh, Lisa, sorry. That's been Amy for a long time.
Of course. So with us today, we have Jen Archbold. She's here to represent her sign for her new business, Think Natural, Jen, a White Cloud and Organic Hair Salon. The sign is proposed to be 36 inches by 18 inches, which makes for 4.5 square feet, one-sided sign. And the colors are a little different because they're not like a paint color, but more of a color that you would find on the computer. So a best description of them would be that the background is vanilla, there's a cloud element, which is sort of in the background with some opacity, and that is a light blue color. And then the font is gold tan. I will note that the colors, as Jen described them to me, will match the building quite closely. And there's also a graphic of a diamond proposed, that's the blue color as well. And that has the opacity, so it would be in the background and doesn't really come through on the graphic as well as the applicant would have liked. The lettering style for the main is a linotype didot and a subfont furtura. And the applicant provided a description of why she believes those fonts are appropriate in the historic district in her application. Jen, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you covered it quite well.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Are there questions from the commission?
I have questions, but would anyone else like to start? Okay. Here are some questions. Hi, how are you?
Good.
How are you? Good. I am curious to know if the ellipses are part of the name of your business, or if they're just there for the purpose of this sign. The ellipses, the three dots before Think Natural, are they a part of your actual business name?
Well, that, since it's a new name, I can add them or delete them. It's not a huge big deal. But originally, they were there because intuitively, I was going for something like a thoughtfulness. And so the three dots generally are sort of this pause, this moment of pause. Like, you can think of it like a thought bubble on a cartoon, or you can sometimes, when people do text, they do dot, 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 as sort of like, I'm not really speaking anything, but I'm thinking about things. And so that's basically what they represent.
Just a breath before you say it?
A breath, exactly, some stillness, yeah.
I have more questions. What does the diamond represent? Because a lot of times on signs, does the diamond represent anything that's going on inside of your salon?
So all of the symbolism on my, on my sign is less literal and more, so because of what Lisa said about, I wanted it to reseed, so it was very, very transparent. I don't want it to be this really prominent thing like my graphic designer showed me. And so the, yeah, so the diamond and the cloud, well, the cloud has to do with my name. But the diamond is like, how do I describe that? It's a signal to people who know about a certain consciousness called the diamond consciousness. It's like, it's like an awareness that is out in the world. And for those people who know, and even those people who don't know, there's something about being very conscious about your actions and your thoughts and the way that you express yourself in the world. And it's signified by a diamond.
Okay.
Yeah, so I really resonate, it's part of my practice. Diamond light, crystal consciousness.
Okay, I haven't heard that, that's interesting.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna keep going.
Keep going, yeah.
Okay, so do you feel that the tan is going to show up well enough on the vanilla? I, just because the two colors, when you look at the building itself, I'm concerned that they won't read from a distance, and that maybe is a discussion, but I'm just wondering if, if you've like printed it out or anything where it could be kind of, I don't want people to not be able to tell what your sign says until you get really close, you know?
Yeah, I'm okay with the background reseeding, because I think the words will pop out because they're bold. And I don't want it to be garish, I want it to be gentle.
Okay.
And, and I think if the background is any more popping, it will scream too much.
Yeah, I think the background, yeah, I just wonder if the, the words themselves are going to show up well enough, but maybe that's a discussion.
So the Pantone 103 is what the, is what the font will be, the color?
That is, that was another question. So it's that top that you're, okay.
Yes, so the, the font and the rim around it will be the Pantone 103, and then the background will be the 7403.
Okay, that's a little bit easier to, okay.
Yes.
But I don't want you to discuss, okay. Another question I have is, sometimes we shy away from choosing a tagline to be on a sign, like hair, henna, and heart. And I'm wondering how strongly you feel about that, because henna is part of the hair and heart is just you, right? And so I'm just wondering how important that is for you, because I have a feeling we're gonna want to discuss that, so I'd like to be able to say your thing about it.
I, I think it, I'm not sure that just organic hair salon makes sense to people when they distinguish, when they don't, when I can't talk to them about what I do and how it's different. And so, for one thing, people never, like, there's nobody that does henna, very few people that do henna in a hair salon. And so for me, that's rather important, that piece. And I almost want to say natural hair, henna. But the other huge thing I do is that I, it's a very nourishing, nurturing, almost like therapy kind of environment. And that's kind of why I wanted to say something about heart, because it's not your typical salon where you go in and all your focus is on hair, it's really more about well-being.
Therapy.
Huh?
Therapy.
Yeah, it's like, it is. And I take it very seriously, that aspect of it. That's like predominantly what I do, and hair is almost like just the way to get people into my chair so that I can help them.
Interesting.
Yeah.
That's cool. Okay, thank you for, and it's not hair comma henna, and it's hair henna, like, is that?
No, it's hair comma.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and it could be smaller, I mean, it doesn't, you know, it can be less, less out, you know, less predominant. Or I can, I can take it off, it just means more work for me in terms of helping people to understand how I'm different and what I actually provide at a glance.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe, no, that may be a discussion thing. Okay, that's me for this moment, yeah.
All right, thank you. Alter, Ben, with the question about the diamond, you said that's not the way you intended, so...
No, it's awful, sorry.
Could you discuss that more then, please?
Yeah, so if you look on my website, you can kind of see, it, it's very reseeded, it's almost like the cloud, it's barely perceptible.
Okay.
So I really wanted to pull it way back. This was just a really quickie that the graphic designer could, you know, found, he couldn't actually copy what I have on my website. But it's very, it's very, very muted and very, very transparent, like barely seen.
So will, so like that black sort of lines?
Would not be there.
Okay.
On my website, where it is, is where all the black is, is actually white, and it's fuzzy white, so it's almost like a glowy, just like a really subtle glowy.
Okay.
And then there's a, then the blue is not a bunch of different blue colors, it's just one blue that's just very, very muted. So it's not, yeah, this was really not it at all.
Lisa, maybe, maybe you can bring up the website and we can see the image there.
What is your website?
It's JenAWhiteCloud.com.
But the cloud feels accurate to what you want, the shape and size?
I was gonna ask him actually to reseed it even a little bit more, but the shape is yes, what I, I like, and it's all over my website, too. I'm trying to be very systematic and keeping, keeping with the...
Yeah, with your brand, right?
With my brand, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a fair, it's a good, good way to have a business.
Okay.
So this here, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, more like that, and even, it can be even more reseeded than that, so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
If we're going this way.
Sure.
Hello.
Hello.
And, and how exciting for you to start a new business.
Thank you, I'm very excited to be here.
There seem to be a lot, at least on my computer and in these representations, there's a lot of differences of opinion as to what, what colors they are. So I'm looking at a large graphic that happens to not have the diamond, and I'm wondering if that's a good representation of the color combination. It's on PDF page 18. Or at least closer than the, than the, than the first image, which also isn't showing the, the colors of the store.
Are we gonna see it up here?
Hmm?
Yes, stay with me.
Yes and no.
Okay, all right.
I think that the, you know, again, it's not, it's not really gold, it's not really muted, and the background is not vanilla. That's like, you know, it's much darker and much more...
So the background, the main color is...
This looks even different, is that closer?
I would say even a little bit more soft than that.
More soft, okay.
Yeah. I was really going for like a vanilla envelope background.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and then the, the blue would be, I don't know, like, a little bit like the softness of those beads.
So the, I don't want to go too far into this, but are the color samples on page 19 of the PDF more accurate? Were the, were the color name and number?
Right here. Oh, yeah. These, the ones you had named before?
I think so. I mean, we had a really hard time, this was what took so long for us, is that trying to get samples that you could actually see that were accurate, because we're not gonna paint, we're gonna print. And so, yeah, it was just really, really hard to get samples that looked accurate.
Okay, because the, the, the sample, the sample like sign under those color swatches, the background looks pink, which is, I think, more what you intended. Okay, so...
The background looks pink, pink?
Yeah, pink, yeah.
Yeah, you see it right there?
Oh, yes, yes, and that, it's not pink, no. In fact, this little, this little one might be a little bit better even.
Okay, all right.
A little, like, closer to what I imagined.
Just trying to get a sense of the composition. And then I, I had the same, pretty much all the same questions that Commissioner Chisco Martinez had, and you answered them nicely, and, and so, so we'll come back to those while we discuss.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, do you have any questions?
I had similar questions, so we'll hear the discussion.
Okay. All right, we'll open up to public comment now. So anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we will open it up to discussion among the commission.
I'm wondering if the photo, that first photo on page 14 is accurate color-wise?
For the building?
Yeah, because you were saying it matches the building, is that closer to kind of what you're...
We went out and took that photo.
That's what we should maybe be looking at, to look for the colors.
And then that, even that blue, like, if you just mute that color?
Add white to it, yeah, okay.
It's pretty, and we were kind of shocked, because I didn't even plan that. And then my graphic designer's like, whoa, you've got the same colors as the building. And I was like, I guess I do, so.
Yeah, that is cool.
So, yeah, the building is, that, that's very similar, exactly.
All right.
Feel free.
What do we think about the ellipses?
Tell us what you think about the ellipses.
I am, I, I understand the reason for them and the pause, but I, I don't know if it, like, without understanding the background, and forgive me for even saying this, but I feel like it might cheapen the sign a little bit to put those there, even though I'm a big fan of ellipses. But maybe just, I don't know, I think it feels like uncertainty instead of a, like, if you're...
Oh, interesting.
Like, not in general, but I think like if someone doesn't know your background and your thoughts, it might be...
It might be actually a question rather than...
Yeah, and I wonder about that. Anyway, that's, I, I'm not opposed to it, if it's like really important and everyone else is good with it, I just, I think I would prefer it not to be there.
I have a thought on that, unless somebody else wants to jump in. Right, the, the way you're looking at your business, thinking about it, presenting it, the vibe you'd like to do, the ellipses are understandable. We, we, it's, it's kind of hard doing the sign thing that we do, and I like to think we've been successful at creating a cohesive, somewhat, well, super individualistic signscape, if you will, in Nevada City. Hope you agree. And, and one of the things we're asked to consider by code essentially, is, is it consistent with motherload architecture? And so, in the, looking at the historic district as a place that kind of could have, could have existed, you know, in, back in the day, if you will, signs were more direct, more statement oriented. And I, and I think the ellipses are very modern consciousness statement aesthetically, which is, I mean no, you know, throwing no shade about your intent or, or your aesthetic. But, but consistency with the mother, motherload architecture with the, with the building certainly is, certainly is. To eliminate the ellipses, I think, would bring it closer to that. And so that's, that's it with the ellipses. We're also, the white, the white cloud thing, I mean, the cloud thing, is like, we kind of stay away from logos and imagery, or intend to, but, but often it works well. In my opinion, it works very nicely with your name, with the, with the vibe of your business. And, and I think it'll be, it would be a nice color combo, too. And it doesn't like grab your attention, it kind of sets a tone. And, and personally, I have no issue with the, with the tagline, because I think it describes the nature, the nature and the, and the literal practice of your business. I do have a, since the, the diamond is not directly related to what you do and is more of a, I don't know, I, I can't summarize exactly how you said it, but maybe that image could be in, in somewhere else on the front of your business, like in the windows, we don't regulate that.
Okay.
So there's a thought, if you, if you want to include that. I'd be disinclined to support it anyway in the, in the sign, but I'm happy to hear more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have other items you wanted to bring up, Ann?
Yes, well, first of all, I, I think what you're saying about the diamond, I think having both the cloud and the diamond is a little busy anyway, maybe, and you're talking about directness, and so, but I think the idea of maybe putting something on your front door or in the window, like, if that would be something you're open to, that's a really great idea, Tom. And I'm gonna just be the punctuation princess, no, I don't like that word at all. I think that A and Ann Organic Care Salon maybe should be capitalized, because, and I, and as long as there's a comma after hair, like you said, we don't need the Oxford comma after henna, but, and you don't spell your name with a period after the A, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's your name. So I think that would feel more professional to me if there was a capital on the Ann. And that's not, not just because my name is also Ann.
So let me ask you then, so I, I'm really actually agreeing with you about the dots, so let's take the dots away.
Okay.
But if I take the thing between Think Natural and my name away, don't you feel like it's like too linear or too, like, I feel like there's some, needs to be just something in the middle there that anchors it? I just feel like if you take it away, it's just gonna be like, like, maybe I'll have to drop the Think Natural down farther to be a little more central or something, like the balance would be off.
I don't think that's a bad idea, actually, to maybe drop down Think Natural to the middle and, I don't know.
We could, I think it's something we can consider here.
Yeah, okay.
So did you have other?
Those are my, I just, yeah.
Okay.
And, and I'll say to, this is maybe not, well, simplicity has to do with consistency with the motherload architecture.
Sure.
But the, the lack, the lack of the diamond symbol between Think Natural and the next line makes it a clean and solid composition to my eye.
Okay.
And, and I think that might be a hallmark of, of what the sign language we're sort of looking for is. And the cloud, the cloud is like plenty of entertainment.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Perfect, that's fine then, yeah. I'm just concerned about the balance, but if we can, if it can be, feel balanced.
Right, I mean, maybe the spacing could be improved, I, I don't have strong feelings about it.
I don't have a strong feeling about it either. Jim, go ahead.
Well, thank you for explaining the color. Well, thank you for explaining the color, which, um, uh, you know, just seeing it with the actual color of the building. And I did go down and look and, but seen it again, and it's, it's, it's nice that it, that it matches the, the building. Was it, I think the last meeting that we approved the, the nuclear, it wasn't actually a nuclear symbol on a one.
Wonder dose.
Dose, and so we're kind of in the symbols, I, I, I mean.
We, we didn't approve it.
We approved the splat. We approved the splat.
Because it seemed to have more to do with paint.
So, I mean, I, to me, you know, having seen your website that, um, and, you know, knowing that in the, in like, in historical signs, if you're, uh, selling saddles or something, you have a saddle on the sign. It's a little, it's, it's an abstract thing, but it's sort of an indication of, of what you do, so. I, I think that, uh, so I'm kind of thinking that it's not a bad, it's a good idea.
The diamond is a good idea? Okay, thank you for that vote.
And any other comments, Jim?
Oh.
Uh, I agree with most of the things. Actually, I'm okay either way with the diamond. But actually, what the diamond reminded me is, like, the, after you explained it, the symbology like in a Mason symbol or the Oddfellows or something like that, which actually has some historic precedent.
Roll the history, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm okay either way. I agree, if you're fine with taking off the ellipses, actually, I think it will make the, that, that line look more balanced, uh, overall. I think that will improve the sign. And, uh, I agree about the comment, I, I think it's great that the cloud reflects your name, so.
Thank you. Can I throw?
You, go ahead, go ahead, that's all I have.
Can I throw something out there, being the only woman on the commission today? As someone who, like, not knowing the diamond symbol- symbology, I really like what you said about, like, the historical precedence. I might be less inclined to go into your shop because I would think you'd be kind of a blingy person, and I'm not, like, blingy, you know, and I'd be like, oh, we're going to have different, just to throw it out there as you're considering what you want to do, because I think I feel kind of equally okay, but I might think less that if I didn't know the symbol, like, that there's something else, I might just think, oh, like, you might push me to get more, like.
Like I would be materialistic or something?
I don't know, like, I'm just not a, you know, like, I'm, I am very natural all the time, you know, so.
Do you mean nail charms?
Nail char, no, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know, but it's.
So that was.
Just a thought.
Yes, I appreciate you saying that. Uh, I love all this feedback, by the way, thank you, because I had to do this all myself, I was like, uh. And so, that, that's why I thought that diamond was atrocious, because it, it's not, it's not about bling, right? So, I'm wondering, like, if I reseeded it and fuzzed it out enough so that it's just really like a, a placement, like, a, almost imperceptible, but just there's something, like, it, I don't want it to.
You'll see it, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I want it to be like, more like a frequency rather than, uh, like, a thing that hits you in the face.
Yeah.
And so if I reseeded enough, maybe it, it won't strike people as that, as like, yeah, I don't know.
Because that's like, almost like a misaligned, like, that's not the vibe you're putting out there, so.
Totally, like, the opposite, so that's really good, interesting.
Since this is the discussion portion, and I tend to have opinions about design, I, I think, I think a blurred-out diamond against an indistinct cloud pattern might be getting a little.
Busy.
Well, just a bit away from the, uh, state your name and business kind of idea of a, of a historic-y sign, um, so, so.
If you choose to not have the di- or we choo- sorry, I thought.
No, no, I'm, I'm finished, I have, no, I, I ended in ellipses, I apologize.
If you, if it ends up that the diamond does not make it, how, whether we don't vote or you choose, I mean, one good thing to do might just be to take Think Natural and just space it equally between your name and the top of the sign. And then it would feel balanced, I think, and like, so, you know, that would be a good way to just.
Yeah, I agree, too.
And that would be a great composition, I think. I mean, I wonder if the diamond could be, like, in the corner or something instead of in the center, but now we're talking about even crazier stuff, so, yeah, so I won't do that, I saw the look.
It's a non-binding look.
Just like ellipses.
Well, is there more discussion, if not, we need a motion? If anyone would like to make a motion?
This is a tough motion. What do we even say?
Just to remind, from what you said in no ellipses, on the Think Natural, Ann capitalized the A for the word Ann.
Oh, yeah, and a comma after.
And a comma after hair, right.
And are you guys okay if I say natural hair, or do you want to just keep it hair? And, and maybe make the font just a tiny bit smaller?
I don't know that the font would need to be smaller, even if you added more. You mean, so natural hair, comma, Hannah, I mean.
Natural's fine.
Whatever you think needs to be on your, what do you think needs?
Well, that's what I, I think I would like to do that, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't have, yeah, you could add that word, I don't think it would, I mean, it wouldn't have an effect as far as, in my view.
Okay.
I think it's not a, like, my problem.
Okay.
And if, actually, well, oh, go ahead. I was the chair, and I keep forgetting I'm not the chair, so I'll.
Would you like to make a motion, or do you have further discussion?
I can try to make the motion.
Did you want to make a motion, Ann?
I just, I'm undecided about the diamond, so I don't know how to make a motion about that. Um, okay, I motion to approve this sign as is with a few changes. Um, remove the ellipses, capitalize the A in Ann. You can choose to add the word natural and it doesn't, and then put a comma after hair. And that's fine with me. Yeah, that's my, that's my motion.
So, you're, so you're leaving the diamond as described, or you're removing?
Maybe removing the diamond. I think that's, I think that would be my preference, but I'm okay if everybody else wants the diamond.
Okay, so we have a motion.
That's our motion.
We have a second.
Sorry, that was really messily.
Give us a favor.
I second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, seven vote.
Commissioner Chisco Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nai?
Yes.
Commissioner Hataumi?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes.
All right, all right. Motion approved. Thank you.
Great, so, okay, so we decided to take the diamond off, that's what we decided?
Correct.
Okay, is that okay? Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
It can be somewhere else, like prominently in the front of your.
My window or whatever, yeah, okay.
Do you think liaison for the, for the final version would be a good idea?
I suppose, well, is there anything that we have questions on at this point?
Uh, um.
I thought everything was pretty clear.
No, I guess not, yeah.
Yeah, I think everything's pretty clear, we don't need a liaison.
Just follow-up, yeah.
Alright, I think, I think we're done, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Good luck with your business, it's exciting.
Thank you, come and visit me, too.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you, I'll take care of it.
Bye-bye.
Alright, the next item is architectural review for 520 Silva Avenue, uh, project remodel. Please go forward. Thank you. Lisa.
Okay, so the next item is for a renovation project at 520 Silva Avenue. Here with us today, we have Grant Wayman, contractor on the left, and the property owner, sorry, I don't know your name.
Kevin.
Kevin. On the right, um, his property is 2.61 acres. It's a single-family residential zoning with standard setbacks. There have been some permits pulled over the years for this property, one of which was approved, but then, I believe it was approved and, um, built for a new garage and a second unit. The project proposal is to convert an unused attic space into livable space, which would increase the square footage by approximately 616 square feet. The, to improve the livability of that space, they are proposing to add two windows to the front gable end of the home, and then also build a dormer to accommodate a bathroom, I believe. And then, there are some existing skylights on this home, and more skylights are proposed to be added. Grant, anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, I think, I mean, I think that sums it up. The, the goal of working with Ron and Kevin is to try to make this thing, this change to the structure look like it was there the whole time, so we're just trying to match existing materials and, yeah, I feel like it's really in keeping with, like, the roof lines and all that stuff are in keeping with the existing structure. The windows are the same as the windows that are in the existing structure. And, yeah, the house is, I know she said it's the, the front gable, but as you approach the house, that's not actually what you see. So, what you see is the porch, so the only change to that one side of the house would be the additional, uh, skylight in there. Everything else is really on the back where the property is sloping up, and it's pretty hard to see the building at all.
Okay. Alright, are there questions from the commission?
I don't have any questions.
None for Ann, Jim?
Yeah, just a quick question on the first picture in the application with the, the laundry line. That, that's the side of the house, as far as, so, um, okay. And then, um, and then there's a picture later, um, I guess of the front. So, the main work, like you said, is, there's the front.
Right, so the only change to that would be an additional skylight on the roof up there. And then where that shingled area is, that you can barely see, there'll be the two egress windows for, for the bedrooms.
Okay.
I have no questions here. And for, for clarity, there's, will the, are the shingles, maybe I missed this in the application, but are the shingles that are shown on there remaining, or is that going to be all replaced with consistent siding?
I think.
That are, that are underneath the gable there?
Right. Um, I think the, the initial plan was to try to just keep it, because we thought that would be what you would want. Though, when I look at it, there's not much shingle left, once we put the windows in, so it might be better to just have it be the continuation of that horizontal siding, but I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't tell you for sure how it looks, um, but yeah.
It sounds like you're indifferent either way.
Yeah, because it's kind of the only spot that has those shingles, so, I don't know, what's your opinion?
Yeah, it's on either side of the house. If, I mean, it increases fire safety to, to the concrete siding, I'm fine with that, if that's a sticking point. There will be a time when I think I want to redo all the siding to improve it. There's some cracks here and there, and I want to do rock wool insulation, um, eventually, so. I think it will happen eventually. I want to get all the, you know, wood off my house as much as I can. I, we hadn't planned for it, this iteration, but.
Okay.
Open to it.
But, yeah, like, it's small enough, there's going to be enough demo. If that's a problem, we can change it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commission?
Nope.
No? We'll open up to public comment. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll open it up to discussion from the commission.
It was a great solution for this house, yeah. That's my discussion.
Thank you.
So, I just had a question about the windows, which, um, uh, you know, looking at the house, the, um, you're, you're proposing to put, um, I guess, uh, two vertical, uh, windows there up under the, the gable.
You mean horizontal?
Yeah, horizontal.
Horizontal sliders, yeah.
And then, those would match the one that's existing on the left, but not match the, um, the one that's on the, on the, on the right, which is more, I guess, traditional.
That, that space was too small, like, to do a horizontal slider that way. Generally, with horizontal sliders, you want it bigger than one foot. So, I think that's why that, that's, I think, the only double hung, or single hung in the house. Yeah, but, like, if you looked at that front, front elevation, those ones are all horizontal sliders, and they are about the same size, massing as the ones that are going up top, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I'd make a comment, like, congratulations on all the found space, that's, that's pretty cool, without, you know, changing the roof line and all that, so.
This kid's pretty optimistic.
Um, and, and in my opinion, if it, if it, if it works out to be more practical, uh, given the, like, the low visual impact, I think the shingles are really cute. And, and if, if, if the, the dormer ought to have shingles then, too, since that's sort of within the roof mass, in my opinion, um, rather than the horizontal siding. Uh, that's just an aside, but, um, but to use the, to use the, um, the, um, the lap siding has on the first floor in the gable where the window replacement goes, I'd be fine with, with whatever your, your, sort of, uh, what you find is most practical and, and, and most in keeping with your future plans for it. I, I would have no issue with the change out of the cement board siding for the shingles. But if you'd like the shingles, shingles maybe ought to go on the dormer, too, unless you were going to change them out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, would be, would you be talking about just the sides of the dormer? Because I think if it was the face of the dormer, it would stick out, because that whole rest of the house is that, that horizontal siding. So, I think it would look like a, it would actually look like a mistake versus looking like that dormer was part of the house, in my opinion. From seeing when people side homes with the wrong sidings at times, like, when they do an addition because they couldn't find the siding, that's, I feel like it might look like that, like, we couldn't find the right siding, so we just, because it, because it's not like a whole wall, it's just that one section of the dormer. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just stating mine, too, in terms of the, the design and aesthetics, and that's not my job here. Uh, but anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm neutral, and if, if, from, from my point of view, if you'd like to change to all cement board siding for the, for the upper level, I think that's fine.
I think that's the smart decision, as far as fire goes, yeah. And it's small enough, might as well just replace it all.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think, given the fire issues, that's, that's fine. Any other discussion? If not, someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, let's see, approve the remodel that's being done on the house on Silva Avenue, 5, 521 Silva, is it 520?
520, yeah.
520 Silva Avenue.
And did you want to, um, also allow them to change the siding to cement board, if you desire?
Yes, and, and the motion would include that they have the option of changing the siding to cement, uh, board.
Alright, thank you, Jeff, I'll second. We have a motion and a second, and roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Chisco Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nai?
Yes.
Commissioner Hataumi?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes.
Alright, approved.
Motion?
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Okay. Next item is 107 Argyle Way, Onyx Theater, extension of time for conditional use permit.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome back.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Uh, Lisa.
Of course. So, the Onyx Theater received an approval from the Planning Commission on July 27th, 2023, for their site plan, conditional use permit, and architectural review application. An amendment to that site plan, architectural review, and sign changes were reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission in July of 2024. I did, uh, coordinate with the applicants, and they requested a, an extension of time to their, um, permits, as those permits do expire after two years if they're un, unused. Um, and the way that it's written in our code is, uh, underutilized, can be demonstrated in multiple ways, including obtaining a building permit, building a foundation and rough plumbing, or establishing the approved use, um, which in this case is the outdoor dining component for the conditional use prior to the two-year expiration. So, the code reads that a, the planning. Um, so the code reads that a, the Planning Commission can approve an extension of one year and, um, up to five times. So the finding of the commission can be made, um, simply as presented in your staff report, or, uh, the commission can request that a new public hearing come through if there was, um, changes to the feelings in the community or any sorts of concerns by the commission. So just a heads up about that. The way that I state the recommendation in the staff report is, um, that the commission approved the extension of time pursuant to condition A, that the entire project, um, does not need to be re-reviewed because there haven't been substantial changes in the circumstances surrounding the permit, that ordinances governing the use have not changed substantially, and that the attitude of the public is likely to not have changed since the original approval. And that's all for my presentation on that. Andrew, anything you'd like to add?
No, that just about covers it, yeah.
Okay. Questions from the commission? I'll start. Um, it sounds like you're looking for cost reductions. Do you expect to come back with?
Yeah, I, I noted that the reference to cost reductions, it's not so much reductions as it is, we have a budget from the owner and the contractor went over our drawings and we just need to kind of move stuff around, really. There's not going to be any real difference, uh, that I can see, but we are in the midst of that process.
Okay.
It has turned into a multi-month analysis. It's a very richly detailed building, especially on the inside. And so to get the dollars together on those things, that all kind of spilled out on the table about sixty days ago, and, uh, we began making maneuvers to bring the budget in line with what the owner wants to do, but we haven't made any real decisions about what's going to change other than probably nothing. We're probably going to kind of move stuff around, a little bit richer over here and not so rich over here, kind of thing.
When you say move around, you mean like, in terms of where you're allocating the dollars on the interior?
Yeah, without changing the perception of what the project looks like or feels like or anything like that. I mean, I'm talking about like data systems and lighting and, uh, fabric curtains and stuff like that.
All right, stuff that's outside of our preview.
Which there are, and that's just the tip of the iceberg.
Okay.
It's a pretty complicated thing. And in the course of that year to two years that we've been working on it, there's just been a lot of delays and, you know, the owner was out of commission for a few months and so here we are, and when we see this coming up with some decisions to be made, we've, we've actually created a set of construction documents suitable for submittal to the building department. It's like ninety-five percent done, we're ready to kind of get in there pending some decisions.
Okay.
So we just need some more time.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
And my, my question is, there, you know, there, there are a lot of revision clouds and we don't need to pay attention to those because those are things we've already considered under architecture review previously.
I think so, yeah. You mean, on the drawings, there's clouds or?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
I think those are from the previous submittal last year.
Yeah, okay, so we covered those in our architecture review.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then next week there'll be a liaison meeting regarding this modification we made of the sign.
Okay.
The marquee.
Okay. Now that's it? Any other questions? Nope. All right, any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none? Any discussion from the commission?
Nope.
Seeing none? All right. And then, I think, I'll make a motion then to approve, uh, the extension of time with the finding that a new public hearing is not necessary to review the entire project because there have been, there have not been substantial changes in the circumstances surrounding the permit, that ordinances governing the use have not changed substantially, and that the attitude of the public is likely to have not changed since the original approval. Someone like to second?
Second, I had a mo-.
All right, the second. Roll call.
Commissioner Shisko Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nai?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatai?
Yes.
And Chair Brown?
Yes.
All right. Extension granted. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hope you get to keep all the pretty stuff.
Uh, the pretty stuff is well protected. We're talking about like infrastructure guts at this point, yeah.
All right. Next item is consideration of a presentation of the process of the development, the general plan update to the open space element. To Lisa.
Yes. Uh, so the city has embarked on, um, doing some planning work to update the open space element of our general plan. This update will help align the city's long-range planning documents with current community needs and priorities related to open space. That includes outdoor recreation, natural resources, and public health and safety. Uh, the open space element will include the development of new goals, policies, um, and implementation strategies with an action plan to ensure the city's approach to open space planning remains forward-thinking, inclusive, and responsive to, um, current and evolving conditions. Community input will be essential to the success of the effort, and a series of public workshops are scheduled for August and September to gather feedback from the community. Um, there is a Senate Bill fourteen twenty-five that became effective January first of twenty twenty-three that requires cities and counties to update their general plan, open space element, to align with contemporary open space needs. Um, I became aware of that, uh, bill, bill in, uh, just earlier this year, so we are working, uh, quickly to try to meet that, um, requirement. And, um, the update will explore revised goals and guiding principles, newer updated policies that address public access, land preservation, natural resource protection, and recreation opportunities, implementation measures to guide future actions and investments, and improved data and mapping to support informed decision-making. Uh, let's see, what else here? As I said, public workshop in both August and September are planned. In August, we plan to do community visioning and priorities, and then in September, a review of draft goals and strategies. We'll have an interactive survey that is currently being developed and, um, hopefully other interactive tools. I meant to say online survey. I'll be working on developing a stakeholder, uh, interest group to have, uh, more focused meetings and stakeholder, um, engagement. And then we will do some participation at community events and pop-ups together, more community feedback. So our timeline is, um, outreach in August and September. October, we hope to have a draft and, uh, the SEQA prepared and then, uh, for the commission's review, and then in late twenty twenty-five, consideration by the city council for adoption. We do have a page on the website that has been created for folks to keep up on the progress and to get those, um, relevant dates for workshops and link to the survey. Bear with us as we develop that. And I'm looking for a, um, the chair to take any public comment and then provide any input or recommendations on this topic.
Okay. See, are there any questions about the process first from the commission?
The state law that was passed, SB fourteen twenty-five, effective January one, twenty twenty-three, that, that's part of the reason that, uh, we're initiating this process. Do we, do we know anything about, uh, anything more about what, what, what the state is like expecting communities like ours? Can you say anything about that, uh, to do, just in terms of, you know, making modifications or directions that they want us to go?
Yeah. So there are requirements, um, that are published by, uh, Office of Planning and Research. So they have general plan guidance that they provide for each of the required, um, general plan elements. There's seven elements of a general plan that are required. And so when a jurisdiction goes to update the one element or the whole general plan, that serves as a reference document and it shows, um, what is required by law to, to include in that, um, element, and gives suggestions on, on, um, what to include as far as maps or content. So, yeah, it's a guidance document that's reflective of, um, state law.
And is that available now?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I could share that.
Okay.
That's online, Jim, on the, we're not OPR anymore, I forget their new name, but.
Okay.
Yeah, Office of Climate and Land Use Innovation, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So. Just another question, and, you know, I was reviewing this and now I'm not sure whether it falls under the purview of this in the general plan, but does annexation of, of, uh, areas come into this?
Yes. So we will be looking at some areas in our sphere of influence and including reference to them. Our current general plan, um, does that quite a bit and speaks about like Eric and, Erickson Lumber Company land and Galilee and some of these areas that are on the outskirts of town. And the tech center, because when the general plan was written, or it wasn't called the tech center, but it, they referenced it as whatever they used to call it, I can't remember off the top of my head. Yeah. So we'll, we'll definitely be looking at the sphere as well. Yeah.
And, and for these purposes, you'd be looking at the sphere for open space purposes, since that's the element we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay. Other, other questions? Not public comment? Lori?
Sure. I gotta put my hat on. So you guys know I'm a city planner, but before that, I was a park ranger. So I'm really into open space, but I won't leave my hat on. I, I think, I think this is, I've written two general plans and it's the most fun I've ever had. I think it's really cool that you guys get to work on the open space element because it's the funnest of the whole general plan. So I, I think you'll have a good time doing it. And, and it is important for a lot of grants that are coming up, they want these resiliency policies and, you know, uh, saving nature is, is good as far as getting, you know, uh, grants from the state, so it's a good thing to update it. I just hope that when you move forward on this, that you will keep the essence of our existing open space element. I mean, it's really small, the whole general plan's pretty small, but it's quite a gem. And some of the writing in it is just lovely, and I would hate to see you lose, um, any of that wording. Let me read you one of my favorite sections of the general plan. It's in the conservation section. It says, "A goal of this city is to preserve its strong sense of entry and the sense of a distinct city surrounded by green wooded hills. Special consideration should be given to the perception of the city as seen from the highways, but the sense of wooded enclosure," you know, it, it gets mentioned all the way through every section of the general plan. I mean, there's people in town that know that phrase, which isn't, you know, common in it, that people would know what's in their general plan. So I hope that you will keep that wording, and, you know, it's kind of constitutional in its effect, so I hope you'll just add to it, uh, because it was written by people who were really good writers and who really got it. I do think that the open, it's a general plan, but the open space element gets to be really specific. And we, we've done a lot of stuff that we said we were going to do in the original general plan. We bought Hirschman's, we bought Sugarloaf, we got the Deer Creek Firement's. So there's a lot of things that we've done, um, but I think we need to, you know, list more so that they're specifically in the general plan, and it gives you a lot of backup when you are applying for grants to purchase that land, for example. So the two BLM properties that were talked about in the, the last open space element, they need to stay in there and mapped really well. There's one on the that side and there's one on that side of town, and we really need to finally buy those. Anything we can get on Deer Creek, of course, uh, maybe, maybe the Manzanita Diggins, maybe it's time to buy that. And, uh, I, I think, you know, getting really specific is a fun part of the open space element. And then when you're doing the community participation, I think it's really important to make sure that you know who you're getting the participation from, so when you're doing the surveys and, you know, anything like that, you need to have people put their address because this is Nevada City's general plan, not Western Nevada County's general plan. Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you, Lori. Anyone else have any comment? If not, we'll get back to the commission. Any other discussion among the commission?
Uh, just a, just a, a question, thanks for your clear questions, Jim. Helpful. And, uh, when will we be expecting the next, uh, episode here? Like, is that a first? No, there's a draft that comes after public engagement. And, and when might we, we expect action on that? Is there a deadline for the, for this general plan update?
Uh, yes, so I'm hopeful to bring that draft to the commission in October.
And, and then your, the, the initial draft is the one that the public weighs in on during these workshops and?
No, the workshops are more visioning and getting comments like what Lori just gave with specific places and actions and ways that the cities should engage with open space or create policies for protection or use, um, or expansion. That's how I see it at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. And you may have mentioned this, is, is that process outlined on the website, city website right now, or will it be soon?
It will be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
When do you expect to have that on the website?
It's pretty vague right now. Um, I'm working on it actively each week, so.
Yeah.
Uh, definitely within a week or so.
And that's at the website here, linked in the, in the agenda, uh, nevadacity.gov slash open space?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, also, partly to what Lori alluded to, there are different partners, you know, who are engaged in different things on open space in, in, in the area with Nissan, Nevada City Rancheria, or, uh, Land Trust, others. So presumably there'd be some specific outreach to those groups too.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're, you're talking about the, like, Bayou Bl.
Bayou Bland Trust, yeah. Thank you. Any other comment or input or discussion? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Nevada County Narrow Gauge Railroad Museum Rail Extension Project on Railroad Avenue, the Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration. Great. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, Lisa.
Okay, so, um, the item before you today is for review of the, um, environmental document, which is an initial study mitigated negative declaration that I prepared for this project. The, um, project is called the Nevada County Narrow Gauge Railroad Museum Rail Extension Project, and, uh, the, uh, railroad museum seeks to construct a narrow gauge rail line that will connect to the existing lines on the Northern Queen Inn property, um, traverse along Railroad Avenue to the intersection of Sacramento Street and Railroad Avenue, right there by the Chevron Station. Uh, the purpose of the rail line is to provide a living history exhibit so that people can view and experience a steam locomotive, um, as it would have been in times past, so it's a, a living history exhibit. The ISMND finds that the proposed project doesn't have a potential to have a significant impact on the environment. I did provide mitigation measures and they can be quick referenced in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The ISMND was informed by several special studies that were, um, done for this project, including a biological report, a noise study, a traffic study, um, and a geotechnical study. The mitigation includes a pre-construction nesting bird survey if construction will take place between March first and August thirty-first. Uh, that's a bio, bio one for biological resources. Bio two is to avoid impacts to the stream during and after. Bio two is to avoid impacts to the stream during and after construction. And that outlines, one, two, three, four, five, six different practices that need to be adhered to to protect the stream area. Bio three relates to best management practices in the riparian habitat and near the stream also. And then for noise, I have one mitigation measure for construction and also sounding the steam locomotive's whistle and that it should be limited. Construction shall only occur between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM and daytime hours. And then no sounding of the whistle shall occur when the steam engine is adjacent to the Northern Queen Inn or residences on Railroad Avenue unless it was an emergency or warning. And then two mitigation measures for the transportation section. And that number one is that all crossing signals, signs, and safety features be designed by a qualified traffic engineer to meet current auto and pedestrian train grade crossing standards. There's a manual on uniform traffic control devices that should be referenced and the project features for traffic exclusion should be designed and built to a level of satisfaction that meets those standards and the city of Nevada City. And then transportation two is that the narrow gauge rail folks should notify the Nevada City Police Department, Fire Department, Cal Fire, Nevada County Consolidated, each and every time they intend to run the train on the track at least 48 hours in advance of that operating schedule. I do believe that with those mitigation measures, that it brings the project to a less than significant impact and that there's no chance of affecting the environment. I will note that the city council will hear this item on August 13th and that in any future design work will come through the city council and will be reviewed at that time. The drawings that are included for your, that were included for your review are preliminary in nature, so as design progresses and the narrow gauge folks get closer to building, all of this will be under the purview of the city council. John, would you like to present, or Andy? He has Andy Casano with him and this is John Christensen.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members or commissioners. My name's Andy Casano, I'm a planner and land surveyor with Nevada City Engineering. And I'm here today representing all of the sponsors of this ongoing Narrow Gauge Railroad Museum project, which are the Nevada County Narrow Gauge Railroad Museum, the Nevada County Historical Society, and the city of Nevada City, all have been ongoing sponsors. With me here today, my gentleman here with me is John Christensen, for nearly 40 years has been the heart, mind, soul, and leader of the museum's ongoing operations. And when he's not called to active duty in the military, he's over there making this stuff happen. Also in the audience, Bill Falcone, recently retired city engineer, has worked on various aspects of the museum and this ongoing project for decades. And Brian McAllister, our current city engineer, who did the drawing that's in your packet and continues to work on it, I think he's been working on it for maybe 10 years, although I've been told lately that if I think it's 10 years, it probably was 20, but I don't know for sure. And I'd like to think in spirit only, the great late Burl P. Robinson, longtime city manager of Nevada City, is floating out here somewhere, supporting this project. Next to John Christensen, he's, has been the most advocate, supporter of all of these efforts. To kind of remind you how all of this worked, the museum has been this partnership between public, private, and nonprofits. The land and the building where the museum is located is owned by the city. Most of the artifacts in the museum are owned by the Historical Society. The museum's run by a governing board that's a division of the Nevada County Historical Society and John is the chairman of that board. The land for the museum was donated by Roy Ramey's family, which was, he was previous owner of the Northern Queen Inn. And you get to the museum by driving over an easement that was donated by Hooper and Weaver Mortuary. So all of these things came together to make this happen and to recognize the extraordinary history and importance that the railroad had to the history of our region. The offsite track exists with permission from the in-town campground and also the current owners of the Northern Queen Inn. So this is the next step. Now, when you go to the museum and you see engine number five sitting there, it's pretty impressive and it's really cool if you have time to go over there. It's got so many great machine parts and valves and complicated stuff that made it work. But when the thing is running and you see it belch and puff and chug and roll along and you can feel it, even if you can kind of feel it in your body, the vibration of this heavy machine that's rolling along. So we think it's going to be a wonderful aspect for people to understand the living history and importance of the railroad. We'd like to thank Lisa McCandless for her really hard and very detailed work on this initial study. It's very well written. We'd like to, we think it's perfectly adequate to move forward and recommend that the findings that she's recommended be adopted by the planning commission. And we look forward to moving forward with this project. John, Bill, Brian, we're all here to answer any questions you have about the past, the future, this thing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andy. John, is there anything you'd like to add to?
Well, do you have any questions for me?
Okay.
That's a good place to start, I think.
No, that's okay. All right, we'll go to questions now.
I just want to interrupt for a second for a technical thing. My battery went down on my computer and I've got this and I don't have a code, an access code.
Oh.
Bear with me.
Chair Brown, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I need to make a couple of clarifying points regarding what we're actually doing here today. After agenda review and further discussion with staff, there are two points of correction that need to be made, one in the actual agenda, which is your motion would be to recommend approval or not of this mitigated negative declaration to the city council. It's not a final action, it would be recommendation. They will have a future discretionary final decision to make and therefore as the final decision-making body, they will be the ones that will actually approve, give final approval to this document. Because of the need to move this SEQA document forward, those two things will be bifurcated. The council decision will come with a later agreement, operating agreement, but the SEQA document will be approved, as Lisa said, sooner than that. I believe she said we're looking for next month to move this along to the city council. The next point is that in the land use section, it discusses the need for a variance. However, a variance would be inappropriate under these situations, the city can't actually grant themselves a variance. So you're not, that is not a decision of the planning commission, you're not granting or disapproving or approving a variance. We will strike that from the document. By striking that from the document, it does not trigger the need to recirculate this document. The recirculation is covered by SEQA Guideline Section 15073.5 and recirculation is required if there's a substantial revision. Deleting this variance is procedural. A substantial revision would mean a new and avoidable significant effect has been identified and we're adding mitigation measures or project revisions to address that. This is not the case by deleting language regarding the need for a variance. Or the other circumstance of a substantial revision would be if a proposed mitigation measure, you determine that the proposed mitigation measure would not reduce potential effects and the variance has nothing to do with your mitigation measures and whether or not they mitigate correctly or they don't mitigate correctly. So I just wanted to put those two points on the record for you. So if you have any questions, let me know, but I hope that clarifies where we're going with this. It's a recommendation to the city council on this document.
Great, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
To summarize, we're not approving, we're making a recommendation on the SEQA to city council and we're striking the variance language from the recommendation, from the council. Got it, thank you. All right, back to the commission for discussion or questions, I should say.
I have a question probably for Russell. If, in our opinion today, the proposed mitigation measures might not be sufficient, would we make recommendations or comments that would then go to the city council? Or is our goal here to move it forward and then do modifications or suggest modifications? Or the city coun, I don't know, I haven't formed a question yet, but.
I can answer it. Your task would be to provide your comments and if you have recommended language on mitigation measures, then you would include that, try to be as specific as you can, so Lisa can capture that, but please provide that input to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
But again, it should be, you know, a consensus of the commission that those are your recommendations.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
All right, other questions?
I have a question. So I used to live on Railroad Avenue for about, I don't know, 12 years, on the corner of Gold Flatt and Railroad, so it wouldn't be, but I walked down that street all the time. I remember when I first moved in, I came to set up my utilities and I was told there was going to be a sidewalk that went all the way down. Is that not, I mean, it was supposed to be done 10 years ago, but I'm just thinking about walking down that street and how, I'm wondering how substantial this is going to narrow that street because it's already, if we're talking about, I know this is a different type of environment, but I'm talking about safety concerns because I was like toddler, baby, no sidewalks, people driving fast, a street that you had to kind of hop to the side just to have the one car pass. So I love this project, so I'm not at all, I think it's very cool. I just, I'm wondering how much it's going to narrow that street and if the sidewalk thing is like, I don't think it needs to be there at this point, but I just, that's not a thing, right? There's not a.
I could answer.
Okay. This is Brian McAllister. Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Brian, thanks.
So we, we applied for funding like 12, 14 years ago and we kind of compete with the county and other cities for that type of funding, for sidewalks. And so we, we could have funded it with general plan, but it's just we had other priorities for general plan, so we were trying to get this outside funding. But we're pretty close to getting it. We don't quite have it, but I'm expecting to get approval within the next month. And it would construct a sidewalk from where the existing sidewalk ends on railroad by the, kind of by the commercial buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it would extend the sidewalk around the corner to the, past both driveways of Northern Queen and that's kind of where it would stop. And it would include widening of the shoulder, so it wouldn't encroach into the street, it would.
Okay, great. That was really my only, that was my biggest experience that was ever negative on that street, so, yeah, thank you for explaining that.
I have a comment, please, I'm from the neighborhood and there has not been any sidewalks.
If, if you hold, if you hold your.
Are TV levels of the train's whistle within legal county code?
If you could, if you could hold your, we will have a public comment section coming up here shortly.
I'm sorry?
We will have, we will have.
The microphone's on, I, I can't seem to get it.
It's a little hard to hear.
Oh, okay, our microphones are on, but.
Stay there maybe for a few moments, a minute, do you have questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Did you have any other?
No, that was the thing that I was thinking.
I think the volume just got turned up, so hopefully that helps.
Oh, wonderful, Deer Creek lips.
Other questions from the commission?
None here.
I did have a question. Lisa, you mentioned that there was a notification requirement to police. Is that, has that been discussed with the police? Are there actions expected in conjunction with the notification? And I guess what's the purpose of the notification?
Well, the purpose of the notification is just so that all emergency personnel know that the road may be challenging to access during a certain period of time. So as Russ referenced, the operating agreement, I think that that would get further developed on sort of expectations between the different departments.
Okay.
And they would obviously come up with a system of how to address that on the day that the train is on the track. So similar to like Commercial Street, the plan is, you know, at 5:00 PM on Friday, the bollards go up and then they come down on Monday morning. So it's how the police department does their job there. So it could be something similar to that.
Okay, so I understand, so they, essentially they could modify their response plans if they had to respond out there for some reason.
Yes, or have a plan to be able to get through if there was an emergency in between and the road was closed for a short stretch for a short period of time.
Got it, thank you.
I could address that a little bit.
Great, that'd be great.
For you. So every moving vehicle engine has radios and all the operators have radios. And so therefore, you know, if we're plugged in with EMS, you know, if we get a call, you know, our central calling station or who's up in net control, we, you know, if you have an engine on the road and it's in a bottleneck area, like there are, there is one bottleneck area, we could get out of that and then stop, you know, so any vehicles that need to get by can be cleared, so I don't see it as a big problem.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Ooh, that is louder. Is, you were talking about the regularity of the schedule, you know, is there going to be, is the plan to have kind of a regular schedule for this as well, or is it going to be like different from?
This, right now, we have a regular schedule for our rail buses on Saturdays, so they run six, runs on Saturday. And then we have one steam up Sunday each month, the second Sunday of each month, and that's highly regulated. And basically, we're just running the locomotives down to the meadow and both pulling a passenger car and running loops. And, but if we go onto Railroad Avenue, it would be very highly regulated. I don't expect that, I laid it out and I thought it would be up to maybe three trips a day, you know, back and forth. And each one of those trips, once you're on the road, wouldn't take any more than 10 minutes. And then once you get to, you know, the depot site, you're actually off the road, you know, there's that 200-foot section where the kiosk is. And the engine and any cars that was. is and the engine and any cars that was, it may be pulling would be between the curb and the sidewalk and off the road and, and available for observation. So, yeah, we do have a, a schedule planned and that's about what I can tell you right now.
But it wouldn't just be on Saturdays anymore, you were thinking throughout the week now?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, it's still be...
This would be, this is going to be a special event occurrence, you know, well, I would say, once, something scheduled once a month plus like holidays, you know.
Oh, this isn't a...
Like, May 20th is the railroad's anniversary and then you've got the 4th of July and then, you know, like that and then Constitution Day weekend, you know, things like that.
I see, so this isn't something that's just going to be a constant...
No ma'am.
Not at all, okay, I'm just preempting some of the comments.
Well, he said, when we discussed this, I was asked if it's going to be more than 20 times a year and I said, well, right now I don't see it being any more than 12 at the most.
Wow, okay.
So, it's low impact.
Yeah, definitely.
And, you know, and these events, we, we advertise, you know, and I expect to get a lot of people attending because it's pretty, pretty special to actually be running an 1875 locomotive...
Yeah.
On a piece of Nevada County narrow gauge roadbed, you know, anyway.
Pretty neat.
Yes.
I want to jump in, so the, the, the more limited schedule has to do with the, the extended track area that we're discussing or that, that we're considering today, correct? Like, just...
That's true.
A special, and...
Okay.
And, and, you know, its use is basically up to the city in Nevada City. I mean, if we need to, if we want to extend the schedule, we would have to come back and say, you know, what about this or what about that, you know, but, you know, we're a volunteer organization, so it's, it's tough, you know, running a full-time operation like that.
I think your schedule's limited now, you're only one Sunday a month during summer months.
Exactly, for steam-ups, yes.
Yeah, for steam-ups, exactly.
Yeah, and then, and then special occasions.
Right.
We'll, we'll steam up like our volunteer dinner coming up, we'll, we'll fire up the engine and take it down to the meadow, so people who don't get to get a ride in the cab normally when they're, they work up in the museum, it gives everybody an opportunity to, to play and experience that, so, yeah, those kind of things.
Got it. Any other questions? I do have a question. Lisa, could you go over again the limitations you were citing in terms of the sounding of the whistle?
So, the way that I have the noise mitigation written is that it's mitigation measure noise-1, all construction shall be limited to daytime hours and then also sounding of the steam locomotive's whistle shall be limited, no sounding of the whistle shall occur when the steam engine is directly adjacent to the Northern Queen Inn or residences on Railroad Avenue, except in emergency or as a warning because of an immediate threat. So, there's a few residences that were, that are on Railroad Avenue and the noise specialist in their report identified those locations. If you'd like, I can find that for you, might take me a moment. Okay, so this is their figure two, proposed track installation route and receptors, so this shows the potential or the sensitive receptors, which means the residences. So, one here, another here is a residence, the triangle, and then the other, there's one house here, that's sort of an anomaly, and then the Northern Queen Inn is here. But, but there's various buildings of the Northern Queen.
And, for those who can't see it, what do the circles represent on that figure?
The circles represent what the noise consultant considered non-noise sensitive uses, so businesses that are typically closed on the weekends, I think.
I could address that if you'd like.
Sure.
But usually the whistles are blown, particularly with grade crossings. We, we don't have any grade crossings on Railroad Avenue, it will be on the left side of the road going toward town the whole way. So, what, you know, the only whistles usually used would be one blast, you know, meaning we're standing still after we stop, two blasts, meaning we're going forward, three, we're backing up and, and so those are the only, the required, you know, signals that we need to make on Railroad Avenue. I would, what would happen is that we would have flagmen at every entrance because they would be, run ahead of us and would be flagging or monitoring any driveway, like the two Northern Queen driveways and, and anything, you know, heading toward the bank. In fact, we won't get, we, we get off the road before we get to the bank, as you know. So, it's, like I said, it's, it's very limited whistleblowing and we try to limit our whistles also when we're operating on, on our steam-up Sundays.
So, those whistles you referred to would be, those would be sort of at the northern, at the terminus? You'd be, you, those would be sounded when you were positioned at the northern terminus of this spur?
Yeah, so just when, if the engine is going to back up, then it'll do three short blasts.
Okay.
You know, and you can, you can, you know, wind that noise level down too.
Got it.
Doesn't it? It's just to warn everybody that the engine's about to move. So, certain things we require to do by law anyway.
Great, thank you.
I think, I think I've heard my answer in there, but just to clarify, because it seems to me like it's a wonderful, wonderful resource thing you're doing, like a super cool thing to have trains going on our roads and like, and it would be fun to blow the whistle because I got a train, I got a whistle, wouldn't the public love it? So, you wouldn't propose the operation of whistles except for proper railroad practice and not just for fun blowing of the whistle?
Exactly, and we just came back from the Nevada State Railroad Museum, operating there, we, the engine went there for its 150th birthday to run with its sister engine, Glenbrook and so that, and they had the same policies. They have one grade crossing and they would blow, you know, the two longs, one short and one long and, but otherwise they restricted the whistles for the same reasons, because local residents are around and they don't want to annoy the heck out of them, so.
Right, so those, so those grade crossings, the startings and the stoppings where whistle, where whistle use would be indicated are not in close proximity to sensitive receptors as shown on the sound study, is that correct?
Right, there's no reason to, you know, even coming, egressing onto Railroad Avenue from the Northern Queen, you know, we wouldn't have to use the whistle, but normally what we would do is have the bell ringing and just to let people know. And, so that's, that's the more common way to message to everybody.
There really are no grade crossings with this program.
Right, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking that question to sort of clarify for the public what your intentions are in relation to the sensitive receptors in the site. And your, your mitigation, your mitigation for noise encompasses all that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Commission?
I just had a question, but you have people that are coming to the steam of events and so, and you'll be advertising these events, do you have sort of any projection on how many people you might expect to, to...
Well, you know, it's hard to say from day to day up here because there's a lot of competition for, for Saturdays and Sundays, but our last steam-up last year, we had 500 people show up and we were, we were really busy, you know, because we have to do a lot of, it's all about crowd control, particularly when you get people down below and waiting for trains and making sure nobody's getting near the track and, you know, so it's a, it's, it's a lot of a...
It'd be quite a draw.
It's quite a draw and that's just, and that was over 500 on that last day, you know, so...
But that, if one day I went out, there were not 500 people for sure, I don't think that's the typical attendance though.
Excuse me?
I, I don't think 500 is typical for you though, right?
No, it isn't.
Yeah, yeah.
No. Yeah, we got slammed and we were surprised.
So typically you'd be expecting less than 100 or something.
We were around 300.
Okay, okay. Spread over the time.
Very manageable, but we, we managed, we did all right, you know, we were just all worn out in the day.
Okay, are there any other questions?
All right.
If no sir, if not, public comment, so could you come forward now?
I have one more issue.
Oh, please, please, please come forward so we can...
Oh, all right. No, one, just one more comment, just a couple of times, I, I heard this, I don't know if it was a gunshot or a firecracker and, you know, with the high fire danger, I, I just could not hear that and accept that, I don't know what it was, it sounded like a firecracker and so, you know, I just would not like to hear that again.
Ma'am, I can address that for you. What, what you heard was they, some Sundays, some steam-up Sundays, they set up a Western Village and it's a different group following.
Gunshot.
And they draw off the train once in a while and that's...
So, it was a gunshot?
Gunshot blanks, no fireworks whatsoever.
Well, I suppose, you know, I, I live 300 feet from the tracks and so, you know, I might have sort of just...
And the first day they did that, I, I was a little overwhelmed myself as to, you guys need to, you know, calm down on the shooting noise, you know, so just don't...
Well, I don't know how to interpret it, it's just a high fire danger, it's not funny.
Yes, so there's no fire danger in regards to the shooting flags.
Are there other comments? Lori?
Lori Oberholzer, 310 Nevada Street, so I don't live anywhere near the site, but I've been following this project forever and it's really great to see it getting, getting to this point. And I, I did look at the initial environmental study and I do think it really has appropriately mitigated all the potential impacts, I mean, really, really kind of, we're very careful about that, so thank you very much and can't wait to see it happen.
Thank you. Just to say something about Lori. In 86, we worked on, tried to do something similar with Railroad Avenue and then Lori volunteered her time along with her associate to do the limited EIR for the project. Unfortunately, we ran into other problems where we couldn't pursue it at the time and, but anyway.
So, we're back now, yeah.
It's, it's nice to see you.
That proposal involved a lot more of Railroad Avenue than we're talking about now.
Exactly.
Okay, is there one more comment? Yeah, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Lori Peterson, I live right across the street at 384. I've never been to any of these type of meetings, I don't know what I'm going to really say, but my, I have concern on, on the traffic, on what it's going to be like. My, my driveway is only one direction when I come out. When I come out my driveway, I have to go straight down Railroad toward the gas station or toward the hotel, otherwise I have to try to make a U-turn to get out. How is this going to affect me getting in and out of my own home as well as my friends?
Are you at the house next to Leithit?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, so what I indicated in the document was that when we do construction, we would stop, we would stop right in the middle of the gold sack, of course, you know, on the left side edge, so that way anyone coming, Leithit to me or your house can get out.
Because they have really big trucks that have to make, you know, big turns coming out of there.
Yeah, and, and so we wouldn't, we would just go halfway into it.
So, that map that you guys sent me, that you showed is horrible. Where exactly is it going to come, where the gates are that go into the pasture? Is that...
Do you know where that fence is?
Pardon me?
Where the fence is?
Yes, where they have two gates.
Oh, no, no, there's, there's a temporary fence along Railroad Avenue, if you go back, make a left turn and go back, it'll probably be about 150 feet.
Okay.
You'll see a wire fence there.
Yeah.
And that's, that'll be the egress, that's where it'll come out.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to come out further down even so?
Yes, yes.
So, there's going to be more track on the road, so it'll make it more...
Well, the track is going to be at, at ground level, it's street level.
Well, yeah.
So, basically, once, once that's put in, you'll be able to drive over at any time and, you know, and due to the limited, the limited use of, for the track on Railroad Avenue, it's going to, for you, it'd be maybe once a Sunday a month.
Okay.
At most, maybe two for a special occasion.
Okay.
And then, and then everybody would be notified.
When you're having...
Yes.
Events and stuff?
Everybody would be notified, yeah. And if you have any issues, we're always, we'll work it, we'll work through, you know, because, you know, we're here, really, we're here to try and serve the community.
Yeah, I just didn't know this was going to be happening when I bought my home and, and it's a great thing. My, my father, he, he worked on Southern Pacific Railroad and I, and I lived in Sacramento, so then when I moved here on Sacramento Street Railroad, it was really weird.
And I saw the for sale sign on your, the house that you purchased, I asked our local realtor to do a disclosure, he said you did.
They didn't do any type of disclosure.
They didn't put it in, okay. They foresaw.
Let's, let's go ahead and wrap it up if we could, yeah, yeah. Did you, all right, you said, did you have one more question ma'am? Or comment?
It's, would you be able to have, so we get a better understanding physically, a model of your setup that's going to happen, a model, you could, we could go to the museum and see it, oh, that's how that's going to work and, and how the, or not?
Well, you're welcome to come to the museum, the whole museum is a model of...
No, I'm, no, the point is, we need to see how it's going to be set up.
Well, it would probably be more productive maybe to walk, walk the route with you or you could drive or drive along and they could show you exactly where the track's going to go.
And that would be marked by yellow paint, red paint, how would that be marked?
Well, we just point to it as...
So, we can get an idea.
We just point to it while we're there.
I'll tell you what, see, if you look at the, the track, when you come and buy your, your house and once it gets through the bottleneck, the track is actually on the original, it's going to be sitting exactly where it was when it was operating. the original driveway, it's going to be sitting exactly where it was when it was operating back in the 18 hundreds, but once it comes out where the Northern Queen driveway is, where all of a sudden everything winds up, it's going to stay on the left side the whole way, in the middle of the travel, until it gets past Second Northern Queen exit, and then just beyond that couple hundred feet or so, it's going to start migrating back toward the fence line where the freeway is. You know, there's a switch, there'll be a couple of switches there around the corner.
Well, you know, maybe not a model, it's practical, something like paint or ribbon, a trail that it's like-
So, so, may, if I could, if I could bring it back here, so, I think maybe he's offered to meet with you afterwards, and maybe work with you on showing you where it is. Yeah.
And are your microphones working?
Yeah, they are on, ma'am.
And the captions would be helpful on this curve.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? All right, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anyone have any comments, discussion for this item? Let's see, none there?
Maybe someone on the phone has a question.
I, I mean, this, it's, it's great that it's finally, you know, getting done, it's really, I guess it's 40 years or so that-
Forty-two years, you know, we've been on this project, so it's-
It's a real treasure of the community, the museum and everything, and you guys, it's all done, volunteers, so it's really good.
Thank you. This'll top it off.
Yeah.
You know, the project, yeah.
Okay. I, I only, let's see, I had, I only had a concern about neighborhood noise, it's, you know, it's a great, it's a great thing that's happening, what a wonderful thing for Nevada City to have, and for you to have worked so hard for so long toward, and when someone lives in proximity to such a wonderful attraction, it can be, like, inconvenient. And so I think my noise concerns, you know, clarifying that was helpful for me, and this might not be the place for such a discussion, but it would really be good for residents to have like a, like a refrigerator magnet level, like this is the schedule for the operation, for this operation or that, and hopefully your, your planning and scheduling will be solid enough to be able to inform residents of how traffic and, and how traffic will be affected, and when to expect the fun noise and that sort of thing. And I don't know, that doesn't have anything to do with a, a negative declaration for environmental impact, but, but I would think that'd be helpful for it to comfortably merge with life in Nevada City.
We, for each steam-up, we, we print individual schedule. I mean, basically, our schedule's the same, but no, no two events are exactly the same, because things are always happening and changing, but a little bit. We learn something every, at each event, you know, you know, so it helps us make things run smoother. But particularly going on Railroad Avenue, I see that we would have that worked out pretty fast, you know, and I don't expect any real problems, you know, it's just a matter of how the city wants us to, you know, flag, you know, the driveways and whatnot, so, you know what I mean, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm certain that there wouldn't be any slapdash-ness in your operation.
But we're very, you know, we're very careful, we are, because we can, we, we have pre-briefings on Saturdays, and then in the mornings, we have a safety briefing at 8:00 AM before the engines are steamed up, and it's mandatory. If you don't, you don't, you're not there, don't show up, inspect the work, because, you know, we have everybody sign, sign in to make sure they've got, gotten their safety briefings, and they know exactly what's going on, so, we're not messing around. It's, it's serious stuff.
Great.
Yeah. It's reassuring that you say this.
Yeah, we, just one other thing, Bob Woods, he lives on Railroad Avenue, he's also one of our engine operators, and he's also a certified trainer, and so he does training, you know, each spring, and for the people who are working on the railroad or in the locomotives, it's safety, and then operation safety, and then we also send our people to Roots of Motor Power, which is another museum up in the Eureka area, where they offer classes on steam operation safety, and then, and then rail operation safety. So each is a two-day course, and so we, we send our people up there, so that they're actually getting, you know, trained, and, and training by a certified engine operator.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
If I could find the-
My agenda got weird.
Where, so I could do the proper, let's see, Chair Brown, this, this would be a motion to recommend, a motion to recommend approval of this initial study mitigating Nick Deck.
So, Russ, you're cutting out on us, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Can you please start over, Russ?
The, the motion to recommend approval of the mitigating negative declaration to the city council.
I can repeat that, a motion to approve, to recommend, or to recommend-
Recommend approval.
Approval. Of the ISMD to the Nevada City Government.
Of the I N-
SMND is mine.
To the Nevada City Council.
Government, oh yeah, to the council.
Okay.
So I'm going to repeat that?
I'm, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the ISCMD-
MND.
MND to the Nevada City Council for the, I guess, the extension of the narrow-gauge railroad along Railroad Avenue, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second?
No, Anne, I'm sorry.
No, Tom, one of us has a second, your choice.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shiskomartinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nye?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatami?
Yes.
Vice, I'm sorry, Chair Brown?
Yes, all right.
Thanks so much for your time this afternoon, folks.
Thank you. Thank you for the thorough presentation.
Forward to a ride.
Okay, Lisa, I think you had a couple announcements.
Okay, yes. Okay, so my first announcement is we are teaming with Town of Trucky, Nevada County Arts Council.
Hey, if, if I could ask, please, could you guys take your conversation?
For our dark sky photo contests, that contest is currently underway, so if you know any night sky photographers, or if you want to try your hand at it, please spread the word. Submissions are open until July 27, and the Sierra Sun is hosting our submission platform this year. Also, our next regular meeting is August 21st. I do have one or two applicants that may be in a hurry, so I was going to talk to the commission separately and see if a special meeting might be an option in approximately two or three weeks. Our next meeting is five weeks away, so with, because being in the middle of construction season, a five-week wait can sometimes be challenging for folks, because I had one application that was nearly complete, but not quite complete enough to write a staff report and add them to the agenda, so they're anxious to get their permitting done. So feel free to comment on that. That will be a different commissioner. Yes.
And I, it'll, it's all going to depend, I have a fair amount of travel coming up, so-
Okay.
It's all going to depend on the day, and I may miss the 20th, August 21st as well.
Okay. Okay, I can be available, it's just probably not allowed, so, yes.
Did you have, did you have a date in mind, or you're zeroing in on it based on the preparedness of these applicants?
Definitely that, but I was looking at the, either Thursday, the 31st, or August 7th, which is both a Thursday, it could be a different day of the week, but it's nice to keep it on the same day that we're used to.
I may, not sure yet, I have unfinalized plans to leave Thursday afternoon, the 31st.
Okay.
The 7th would work for me.
Okay.
Me, too. I have plans to be-
Some preference for the 7th?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're saying the 7th would work for you?
Yes.
Yeah. I can tentatively put it on my calendar.
Okay, great.
Okay, I think that's it.
That's it.
All right, we're adjourned.